So we're going to go ahead and get started, but we're going to go in a funny order because the Amherst media is not ready. And so we're going to handle the things that are probably not, towards the end of the agenda, is what I would say, but maybe the minutes are not a controversial. Do we have any minutes?
We do not have minutes. Mr. McCarthy has been working very hard on them, but we don't have them.
So, no minutes. So we're going to skip to, bah, 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 bah. Should we do the town meeting business? Because that should not be to the warrant review. So this basically has to do with who's attending and who's representing us at various events.
So the warrant was just published, and you have copies of it on your desk. I would recommend that you go through it, and if there's anything that you wanted to discuss, you could put it, ask me to put it back on the agenda for next time, for the 11th, because you'll be meeting next Wednesday. So, but you do have the warrant. It's got all the items that we talked about, and then there's a special town meeting that's going to be held right before the regular town meeting. And the special town meeting is going to deal with issues related to the charter. And I understand that town manager has asked our town attorney, Joel Bard, to attend that meeting and to make a presentation about how what goes on at town meeting relates to the charter and how the charter will affect what happens at town meeting. And he's also supposed to come forth with a written document prior to that. So anyway, that's the warrant, and all of the zoning articles are on the warrant.
The question before us is, do we want a special presentation of any of these? Or do we want, what was the question about? More information on things on the warrant?
More, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
You said that we should review the warrant.
Oh, yes.
You know if...
If you want to discuss any of the items that are on the warrant, other than zoning amendments, because you've already had, well, you've either had or you will have public hearings on the zoning amendments, but there may be other things on there that you want to discuss next time around.
I would like to discuss zero-energy buildings. Anyone else?
You can email me until Friday afternoon, and I can still put things on the warrant, I mean, on the agenda.
Should we move on to movers and speakers? So let's go through our list and figure out who our movers and speakers are. I'm going to overlook your shoulder. So let's see, the mover has to be somebody who's a town meeting member, and of those of us that are town meeting members are, raise your hand if you're a town meeting member. Just you and I?
Yes.
Okay. So we can, so my problem is I'm going to be away on May 2nd. So, but we don't expect ours to come up on May 2nd, do we?
I don't know. I haven't really checked the warrant.
Okay. So as soon as we, thank you so much. As soon as we finish this section, we'll go on to the beginning.
So it looks like the warrant, the zoning articles are towards the end. They're starting with number 30. So they may not come the first week.
Let's just go down all this, and maybe you and I just alternate in terms of moving?
Sure.
And then we can figure out, the speakers are often from the zoning subcommittee, but, so zoning and medical marijuana, Burt, I can do that.
So you're going to move it?
I'll move it. But who wants to speak to it? Mr. Crowner? Marijuana uses?
Why don't you do all the marijuana ones, and I'll do the ones for all of them?
Okay.
Mr. Burt Whistle is going to move the marijuana uses?
No, I'm going to do all the marijuana.
Oh, you're going to do all the marijuana.
And he'll do all the rest.
And Mr. Crowner will speak?
Then Mr. Crowner will speak to the marijuana? Or to, and then, so all three marijuana? And then, okay, what about supplemental dwelling units?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. And then the amended official, oh, that's Dan.
Who's going to speak to the supplemental dwelling units? Mr. Burt Whistle?
Mr. Burt Whistle.
He's going to do both as mover and speaker?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for the petition article, we can give our, whatever our position is, we can, we can give that?
Yeah, the petitioner would be the mover.
Since we haven't discussed it yet, I'm not sure who the, does, do one of you want to? I guess we don't know what the, what we're going to speak to.
Yeah, I think it's, I think we don't need to decide that now, because it's unclear what's going to happen with that article.
Okay.
And this isn't due until the 13th of April.
And then inclusionary zoning, the planning board version should be?
I'm speaking to both of them.
Both of them. Okay, Mr. Stutzman?
And Mr., who's going to move it? Who's going to move the planning board version?
I'll do the last four.
Well, actually, the petition articles are moved by the petitioner.
So Mr. Burt Whistle will move number 35?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. So the only one we don't know about yet is number 34, who's going to speak to that? And we can talk about that next week.
Okay. Planning board reports?
Planning board reports, we have a system going here. Do we want to talk about that?
I think we have most of the reports underway or assigned, with the exception of Article 34, which we don't need to make a decision on yet.
Thank you.
I'm hoping to have some of the reports to you by next meeting, by the next meeting. So you'll have a chance to review them. I think they're due on the 13th also. Or maybe it's the 17th.
I think it was the 17th.
Anyways, 17th, yes.
I hope it's 17th.
Town Meeting Coordinating Committee and League of Women Voters Warrant Review, Tuesday, April 10th, 7:00 PM.
Mr. Crowner has offered to present the articles, except for the marijuana articles, which will be presented by Jeffrey Kravitz, the Economic Development Director.
Thank you. Any objection? Thank you. Town Meeting Coordinating Committee zoning forum, the next Tuesday.
That's the 17th?
Yeah.
I'm going to give a summary of zoning, my usual summary, and then Mr. Crowner and Mr. Burt Whistle have agreed to attend. And are there other members of the planning board? Mr. Schreiber? Anyone else? Mr. Stutzman? So that's four planning board members? That's good. And you would each present an article? Okay.
Okay, are we good with that section?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to move back to, so if you're just joining us at home, this is the Wednesday, April 4th, meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. So we did start at 7:00 PM, but there were technical difficulties with the Amherst media. So we did Section 5, which was town meeting, really who the movers and speakers would be, and who's going to represent the planning board at various pre-town meeting events. But now we're going to move on to Item 2, which is a joint public hearing with the tree warden, scenic roads. This is a scenic road tree removal to allow relocation of a driveway and curb cut for parcel 2D and parcel 2D-14 to access a proposed new solar installation at Pulpit Hill Road, 20 to 25 feet west of 320 Pulpit Hill Road. The public shade trees impacted by this project include the following trees. This is a diameter at breast height, a 14-inch oak, a 30-inch oak, a 24-inch white pine. And I think I have a preamble that I forgot to. So, yeah, and this is in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5C, scenic roads, and Chapter 47, Section 3, shade trees. It's a joint public hearing between the planning board and tree warden, and has been duly advertised in the Daily Hampshire Gazette and Post Hit and Town Hall. So I guess we ask if there's any disclosures on the part of the planning board. I see none. And then normally the presenter, who's the presenter on this? Please step forward.
Kevin Sullivan, employee of Loadstar, field superintendent in charge of construction. If I might, I'm going to hand out two blueprints. They can go different directions, just so I can reference these to you during your conversations. Particularly to the white copy, these blueprints, and I'll go through the history here, the chronological history. This, in our discovery, for us to have clean title and clean documents to lease and build the solar field out back, we did a meets and bounce survey. The survey will show on the print that for an untold period of time, the town of Amherst, the people of Amherst, and the employees of Kohl's have been transversing the site and entering the site through egress that wasn't on their property. So for us to utilize property, we have to enter a property on the actual property. So this will clearly show you that it has to be shifted to the actual property that we're leasing. So there is no formal agreement, never has been, with the abutting property owner. So this will show that. I'll start at this one. Can you hear me? Or is it recording?
Yeah, you better hold the mic, because of the people at home.
So this print, similar, but it's the whole flyover that we did, so it indicates the vegetative masses, and shows the same reason as to why we need to enter our property on the property that we're leasing. So I'll start at this one. From a relevant standpoint, Mr. Pill had supplied some documentation in terms of statutes of land use. I'm not going to quote them, but I'll just reference that they're important to what I'm describing today here in front of the planning board. On or about the 10th of October 2017, we approached the Kohl's operation about putting a solar field in the back, and this had been an ongoing conversation from five years ago. Loadstar was owned by different partners back then. New Partners Group had come in and decided that it would be a good location in terms of solar, because primary reason five years ago is your substation in the area could not take the capacity of the six meg's of solar that we're going to go into. Upgrades at both UMass and the subsequent substations outside of UMass allows us to be able to ship power. We started with conversations with the staff here. We entered in, brought in documents, had three subsequent meetings to, prior to presenting, and then we presented the conservation, and we received our permit for construction for this project on 1/31/18, with a list of conditions. Once we had our conservation permit in hand, we, because of the way this, your laws are in town, we went to the zoning board of appeals, and we were issued our permit with conditions for February 22nd, 2018. So from a Loadstar position, we recognized it as a permitted project, and we started construction. So although it has a proposed, this is actual. So we had our pre-construction meetings, and as a result, we have now cleared and started to prepare land. Just prior to that, we were informed that there was, this is a degrading, a snafu, that we probably didn't have all the permits that we were supposed to. We were somewhat shocked, but these things happen, and typically when, what, and I'm not belittling this, but when small things like this, they're usually handled administratively, but that isn't the policy here in town, so that's fine. I'm here this evening. So as a result, we can't get into our property legally. The plans will indicate why. We're driving on someone else's land. The town has no access, they're landlocked, to Eastman, so for years, the town itself has been trespassing on someone else's property with no written agreement. People are entering Robert Frost Trail illegally, if you want to use the word trespassing. All that's worth trying to do is use the land that we're leasing, which is where the trees are. So as we talk about trees, I can tell you, and this would not be to discredit anyone, but my background is, 30 years we've owned a nursery as a family. We dig trees for a living. I'm a licensed arborist in the state of Connecticut, and I'm the, was, up until the state law changed, for five years, the town tree warden. So I took the liberty today. I note that the, and again, it's their judgment, they have their format, but I noted that in this paperwork, the tree group says we can get in. The math on those prints will tell you I can't mathematically enter my property, and that the tree should stay. So I took the time, and I'm, trees have paid the bills since I was a kid. Trees sent me to college, so I like trees. Of course, as a nursery man, we like to cut down trees and sell you new ones, so it's a little fickle, but that being said, I did account, and it's not accurate, but it's just for presentation, I counted 192 trees from the co-op to the town, old town garage, which is at the rail tracks. So we had 192 trees, northeast of the Project 42, southeast 32, northwest 57, and southwest 61. So that totals at 192 trees along the scenic highway. I'm talking about three trees on our project. I then took and did an inventory of them, of 192 street trees, only four possess the classic 360-degree growth. 31 are suffering from what we would term a severe case of phototropism. Once you move beyond a 10-degree angle, you can drive down that street, they're all searching for sunlight, phototropism. Typically, in some communities, those are removed. We have 74 trees with basal or cambium damage from the way that the road's being maintained. We're using millings, which is fine, but we also have to understand that 74 trees have been compromised. We have 41 trees with vines that are either impacting the cambium or the development of the canopy. So all said, of 192 trees, and this is counting my three, 147 would require some remediation to become a classic street tree. So I'm from Southfield, Connecticut. I'm spoiled, we have a big town green, I like big round trees, but of the 192 trees, there are very few would be considered a classic street tree. That being said, I struggle with the fact that I can't cut three trees down that I have to cut down to get into property that I need to get into. So when we go back to the permitting process, and again, I understand a stopo, and the government doesn't have to teach us everything, but we came in wide open, ready for conditions. We assumed we met every condition. We were unaware of this situation, where we understand that there's a compensatory department here, that I have to give you money. We're not going to argue about the merits of that. We understand that's the law. So our position is, we need to get into our property, and you might say, why do you need to get into your property? We can't apply for financing till we have clean title. We don't have clean title because we don't have access to our property. Since this has started five weeks, we had a 0.5% increase in our financing. I know monetary isn't everything, but it's starting to have a bad effect. We just had a 3% tariff in steel. This is all in the delay. We can't legally engage in commerce, because I don't have clean title to my property at this point. So I asked the committee today to take a look at the scope, to look at the simple fact that we need to get into the property that we need to get into, understand that, albeit we're cutting trees, the trees on the street in general value are in poor health or bad species, and it would be better for the community to receive compensation, plant better trees, or more importantly, as an old tree warden, to kind of put some money in and take care of the trees you have on your scenic highway. So at that, that's about what I have to say, and I would hope there was some questions or a need for input.
So let's see, does Mr. Snow want to say anything?
A lot of what was mentioned, you know, is true about tree growth, and it comes from the vantage of looking at trees as sort of a forester in traditional forestry. You know, in Massachusetts, a public shade tree under master general laws, any tree over an inch and a half inch in caliber, whether it's strangled by a vine or not, so we'd still have to follow the law of Massachusetts. And unfortunately, we can't handle a public shade tree hearing administratively. It has to be dealt as a public hearing, as according to master general law. So as far as the condition of the trees, it is, there is a lot of, you know, decaying old overcrowded trees along that road, and that's part of its scenic character. The trees that are being proposed to be moved are healthy public shade trees with nice shapes. And with that said, that's why we're here today, to have a public shade tree hearing, is to discuss the possibility of removing these trees for this project, so.
And we, I have forgotten the order of business, but we also have the public shade tree committee here, so we, do we normally hear them at the beginning or during public comment?
I think you can hear from them whenever you want to. Their role is to advise the tree warden, so I think they've submitted a letter, which you have in your packets, and I'm not sure if they're the new packets that I just put on your table, or if they're, I think they're the new packets.
I would, if it's okay with the board, I wouldn't mind hearing from the public shade tree committee before we take questions and answers. Yeah? Okay, so if someone, if one of you wants to speak for the...
Thank you. I'm Henry Lappin, the chair of the committee, and our committee did a site visit and discussed those trees. Unlike some of the other trees on that street, those are very healthy trees. They're not surrounded by vines, and we thought that it would be a loss, especially since there's already to the east of them, there's already a spot where there aren't trees for the driveway that's there now, and then the house toward the rucks and gravel pit. So it would seem like it would be a big gap without trees to remove those three trees from a scenic road. If it wasn't a scenic road, we'd have much less concern, but we felt that they were important. Our mandate is to protect the public street trees, and so we talked about it. We tried to be reasonable, but we felt, in this particular instance, that it was worth trying to save those trees if possible. We also, you know, the construction site is using the driveway that's there to the, to the right of those trees, to the east of those trees, so even though technically they may not have access on their land, they are accessing the site, so I'm not sure how that fits in, but we did notice that. It wasn't like they had no access to the site, so. I think that's all we have to say, that I have to say.
Thank you. And then, there was a site visit yesterday?
There was a site visit. Mr. Snow was there, Mr. Burt Whistle, and Mr. Levenstein, maybe they would like to, and Ms. Chow. Maybe one of them would like to report on it.
Any of you want to report on?
Well, the, the visit was rainy, but we got the same information, basically, that we were just given today, and observed that there was, in fact, a driveway, access that was being used, and that the three trees in question would, in fact, have to be taken down if the driveway were relocated. And the question is, is simply one of access to the site, rather than any, I think, rather than any question of whether or not the trees are worth saving. They're clearly worth saving, they're good trees. And the question then becomes, what do we do about the fact that there's no, apparently no legal access to the site?
Kristi?
I just want to add that I showed up when you all were leaving, so I did see, and I met Mr. Sullivan, and he explained the same thing that he had said before. I just...
So time for general board discussion, then? Jack?
Is Robert Frost Trail along the makeshift driveway, then? Is that, okay. Because I'm just referring to the email that we got from Chris from Cindy Jones, and it just speaks to, there's no legal use of that abutting property for long-term access. Just confirming.
Because of, because it's nicking off the corner of the neighboring property. Yeah. So it's getting way above my pay grade, but isn't there prescriptive easement or something? If you've used something for, I knew you'd have the answer, but...
I'm Michael Pill. I'm an attorney, and I'm here for Kohl's. And the answer is that that use is permissive, and on various Kohl's parcels over the years, we've had issues with the Adirondack Trail and the M&amp;M Trail. And their approach to Kohl's was to claim that they had a prescriptive easement, and I got called in, and fairly shortly thereafter, they had to move the easement off Kohl's land. The use is permissive, and, you know, Cindy Jones is an ardent conservationist, and she's happy to see those trails here. But what you heard from Kevin Sullivan is exactly correct. This is the only legal access to this property, okay? The project, which is under construction, to get permanent financing, has to have this access. The access has to be rebuilt in order to get adequate access over the life of the project, for this project. And what makes this unusual, and I think perhaps somewhat different from other tree cases you've seen, is the Supreme Judicial Court case that I put in front of you all, and it's got my business card, Michael Pill, on it. And at the very beginning, I noted that the, in a situation like this, where you have a narrow strip that provides the only legal access, the Supreme Judicial Court made it clear, and I went back to the original case. There's decades of case law that follow this one, but Anzalone versus the Metropolitan District Commission in 1926 was the seminal precedent-setting case. There is a right of access of an adjoining landowner to go to and from a public way, and that is a clear unequivocal right. Now certainly, if you have a lot of frontage, and there's, you know, different places you might put the driveway, but I think it's clear with a strip like this, and Kevin Sullivan can be, can speak to that more, they have to move those trees in order to be able to use this access. There's no two ways about it. So certainly in other cases, there may be more discretion to say, no, you can't take this tree, and to say, gee, you got to move your driveway over a little, and that's fine. I think that's what Chapter 87 and Chapter 40, Section 15C are all about. This is not one of those cases. And another thing that Cindy Jones put into one of the emails she sent to you, is that Kohl's owns, I believe it's 82,000 or 83,000 trees in the town of Amherst, which they maintain and take care of. They are foresters. They've been doing that since the 18th century, and trees are literally their lifeblood, okay? And their hope is that the substantial amount of money that would be paid for these three trees could be used to enhance shade, public shade trees elsewhere in the, the town of Amherst. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or to turn it over to, to Mr. Kevin, Kevin Sullivan. The fundamental flaw in the report from the shade tree committee is the last sentence, without removing them, access is fine, okay? We're not disputing what they say about the trees being healthy, but they are simply wrong, both factually and legally. And, you know, Kevin, do you want to explain a little bit more about why those trees have to go in order to have the access?
I think we might have the idea on that. So let's do more questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Rob?
So, the solar installation is not actually on this parcel, it's on a different parcel, is that correct? And I don't think we've heard why you can't get on to that parcel from Montague Road or something.
Well, it's going to be easier with mapping. Where's the color map? Can I talk loud, or do I talk...
You need to use the mic, I'm sorry.
I can hold it. Okay. So, I've got a big belly. So, as we look at it, upside down, that's an old lawyer's trick, I'll do it for the rest of the class. Here's the solar field. The only way to egress this is, there's wetlands to the west, wetlands to the east, your landlocked piece to the north, the town of Amherst piece, which is the only way to get in, is through this piece. So, with the only egress, legal egress we have is the narrow corridor. We would have liked to come in by the town garage, but we have a series of wetlands that would prohibit that. So, to be least disruptive to the environment, and more pragmatically, there's a logging trail that went through, so it wouldn't require any, how shall I say, heavy digging or transportation. So, it minimized the impact to the neighborhood, although we have one neighbor. So, that's the reason that we, we have no choice but to come in that way. And the other thing is, just a note, because it was part of the process, we also have to provide for safety vehicles. We're also providing access, we need to provide access, because the pulpit hill co-op community wants to ski there, so we need to provide them legal access. So, when we start to look at this as selfish as I might think, that I'm the only one that's going to use it for a period of 12 to 16 weeks, I leave, go somewhere else, we come in four to six times a year to maintain it. This is actively used every single day. I've made a lot of friends, and some people that won't send me a Christmas card, but for the Robert Frost Trail, that comes right across, that is, again, I've got to reiterate, using land they don't have permission to use, because it isn't Coles' land. We have, the crazy part is, the town of Amherst only has one way in to the Eastman Farm. They've been driving over an easement that they don't have into Coles' to get to the back. And the volume of skiing, even this winter, as we were doing our due diligence, cross-country skiing is a major component out back there. So, this isn't all about me, this is all about having legal access for the community as it stands, because it is entering that piece without permission at this point.
What about fire department?
Fire department had to have a certain pitch, a certain turnaround, and a certain width. So, when we start to talk about fire apparatus, when we get done, and there was earlier comment that we're using it now, we're using it now with a temporary permission, but more importantly, through the conservation process, we're charged with environmental factors. We have to beat the bats before they come back to roost. There was special attention paid by our experts and our monitors, so that we did not compromise the wildlife. So, we had to get in there and get our trees removed, and get our stumps out prior to any mating, or any of the situations where animals move from the wetlands to the uplands. So, we actually, we were backed into a corner on this, and we had to be creative. So, we have a somewhat difficult arrangement for a very short period of time.
So, I just want to clarify, so you've already gone back there and cleared the area for the solar panels?
Yes.
And how many acres of trees were cleared?
9.2.
Okay, so we've cleared 9.2 to have a solar farm put in. And you are using a road that is not on the property that you're leasing. And you need to get more financing, and that financing cannot happen until you have clear title.
Correct.
And to get clear title, you have to move your road onto...
Our leased property.
And these three trees are holding that up.
Currently.
So, what would happen if the trees can't get cut?
Well, in a brief summary, Mr. Pill and some of his associates would probably get a vacation home out of the deal, because we don't have, where our back is up against the wall at this point.
So, the project would not be able to move forward?
Correct.
And we've already cleared nine acres of trees, and just the solar farm won't go in?
I'd rather not think in draconian terms, but it would get ugly, yes. This would be my last visit here.
I love trees, but this just seems, and my father's a tree farmer also, and I just can't see why we would want to hold up a solar farm for the sake of three more trees. And if there is a fee being paid, could some trees, I mean, they said elsewhere, but if you're, I assume, going to remove the road that's there now, and could some trees go in there to start to fill in that gap that they talked about?
Mr. Snow had a comment.
In the effort to save everybody a lot of time, and a lot of talk, I just feel that you're over-concerned, that somebody's trying to not allow you access to the property. Nobody here has said they're going to deny you access to the property. There's a tree hearing process, the process wasn't followed. As a tree warden, you should have known that there was public shade trees involved, and that there would have been a tree hearing. This, you know, process, there were some mistakes made in the beginning, there was no permit filed for a curb cut to begin with. I don't know how that got done, I don't know how they went through this whole process, and these things were missed, but they were. We're here, the town moved as fast as possible to get the tree hearing set, Shade Tree Committee met, did their due diligence in providing an assessment to the tree warden on their opinion. And they, they looked at it and said, well, one of the options might be, could we possibly not move the driveway? Nobody was talking about denying you access to your property. I'm not talking about denying you access to property. My goal is to try to preserve as many trees as possible, look for all the options possible to see what can be done to preserve public shade trees. And that's what we're doing here tonight. So, I just want to move this process forward, and have a quick conversation, discuss these trees, and see what we can do to come up with a solution.
And so, just to add to the excitement, the way, if I can remember this correctly, the planning board will take a vote, and if ours, and then the tree warden has his own vote, and if they match, that's it, right? If they don't match, then it goes to the select board. And then, there's also, there's another, yeah, okay, that's the main part, then. Another fine mess you got us in, oh.
Can I ask just a question, I guess it's administrative, about the fee, you were talking about the $90 per inch of diameter, how does that fold into this whole process?
I couldn't hear the last part of that.
I was just asking, how does that fold into this whole process?
So, we have a $90 per inch replacement value. So, you take down a public asset, healthy public asset. If they were not healthy, we just let them take them down, excuse me, take them down. So, $90 per inch, once, if they are given permission to remove the trees, they would pay the replacement cost, and they would take the trees down, remove the stumps, and put the road in.
Anyone else from the public want to speak to this? Any other comments from the planning board? Are we, yeah, Michael?
I have a couple of questions, and I think they're probably for Mr. Pill, but I'm not sure, I'll ask them anyway, anybody can answer them who wants to. How is it that the access to that property has been for, I don't know how many years, months, allowed to continue without being challenged, if it is in fact not a legal access? What's the history of that, I guess?
You have touched on something which, with all of Coles' lands, keeps me up at night, because there is a lot of Coles' land all over Western Mass, where access for decades, I suspect sometimes centuries, has been informal. In other words, either the actual access is somewhere other than the legal access, or in some cases, God help us, we don't have legal access. And people have just been letting us use it for so long that it's not an issue. And my perception, and I should note, I came here from Iowa in the 70s, is that when you get back before the growth of UMass, which has all happened in the 60s and 70s and since, as near as I can tell, you had a fairly small number of largely farming and rural land-owning families. When Cindy says she's the ninth generation, that's actually not true. She's the 12th generation, because three generations before, lived in Hadley before they came to Amherst, and I long ago lost count of the family connections, okay, between these folks. In other words, these are families that were here in the 18th and 19th century, they all knew each other, you know, survival dependent on getting enough crops in to get through the winter, and using each other's land was not an issue. And my understanding is that's essentially what happened here. But now, when you go to do a solar project, as you might expect, when you start getting commercial loans, and there's a set of documentation, and the title has to be clear, and there has to be access over the legal access. Am I making sense? Now, all of a sudden, it's got to be done by the book, and the way Coles has been doing it since the 18th century no longer works. And what happened here, for better or worse, is they started the construction using the old informal access, and the financing won't let that continue. I hope that answered your question.
Well, it answers the question, it leads to the next question, which is, why cannot an easement, or land swap, or exchange of some sort between the Coles' property and the neighboring property where there is a house, take place and solve this problem?
And the issue there, and...
Well, can I add a quick thing?
Please use the mic.
You can speak, let me answer it legally, and then you can speak to the practical problems, because there's both. Legally, it is true that the company that owns that is Jones Properties, and that in turn is Cindy Jones' first cousin.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think it's unfair to say, while they're, you know, I consider Cindy and her brother Evan to be good friends, and they're among the most decent, honest people I ever met, that family survived for 300 years by being good business people. And the fact, I mean, I'm leveling with you. The fact that they may be cousins doesn't mean that that cuts any ice in terms of, why would the cousins agree to have something that would adversely affect their property so that Cindy can have a business venture? And I think it's best to turn it over to Kevin, because he can tell you, as I understand it, the problems that would be involved with trying to use that.
Well, first of all, I'm not suggesting that there be just an informal exchange, I'm assuming some monetary compensation would occur as a result of this land exchange. I don't suggest that somebody ought to just give up their land.
And for a guy with a PhD in Marxian economic theory, welcome to the capitalist system, they're under absolutely no, in other words, the cousins have absolutely no obligation, and Cindy has absolutely no right. In other words, if you want to buy, you say, we're neighbors, and I own land next to your house, and you really want it, there's even a Massachusetts case where, say, I desperately need your land for my septic system, and the Supreme Judicial Court, Golding versus Cook, said, if you don't want to sell, I'm out of luck, even if literally, I am in deep poo. And the court cited the constitutional protections for private property. So, the answer is, they're under no obligation to even take or consider monetary compensation. And my understanding is, they're simply not interested, because as business people, their focus is on their property. And that's where I keep trying to turn it over to Kevin, because I think it might, it would not be very, it would not be to the advantage of the cousins from a business perspective. Can you speak to that?
Well, more importantly...
Please use the mic.
We would be back for a tree, town tree permit, in order to make our radiuses work. We would still have to remove a minimum of two trees on the abutting property, possibly three. So, we get back to the same situation, we still can't get in legally, we can't have fire engines come in from the west to the east, because the radius is unacceptable, we'd be back, tree committee would have to go out to the new potential easement, and we'd be here for three trees yet again. So, it seems, we have the risk, we have some financial risk now, because we're delaying our own project, and we're suffering from tariffs that have been imposed on the solar industry, that's a separate issue. But more importantly, I have to come back, I have to fill out a form for the scenic highway, I have one tree that I know you're going to tell me is perfect, and I'm sitting here again, doing the same thing, saying, yeah, I moved my easement, but I need to cut two, maybe three town trees down. So, I'd rather cut them down on the property we're leasing, pay the compensation, and move on, because I'm not, I'm not going to be able to get around the fact that I have to cut town trees on. And it would be a harder tug for us to tell you that, well, we went over here, the other thing is, according to our engineer, I called them on the way in, now we would have to move the whole lot line to the east, we'd have to re-engineer and reposition, because that house wouldn't have enough frontage, so we'd have to change who owns to the east.
That's true.
So, there's a series of cascading complications, but it wouldn't prevent me from having to come back to a committee and ask for you to cut trees down.
Yeah, just, it is, the adjoining property is 150 feet, which, I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead.
Oh, this is really, I think, a question for Mr. Snow. So, it looks like 68 inches of healthy trees are being removed, and the replacement fee is $90 per inch, is that right? So, that's $6,120. So, what's the average price you pay when you purchase a new replacement tree, and how many trees would we expect to gain? What's the net gain of trees here, over the three lost?
I'd have to do the math, sorry. The average replacement tree is based on about $90 per inch. So, you can go buy a one-inch tree whip roughly, you know, for $90, that's in a grow bag or a pot. That doesn't include the cost to plant and maintain the tree for three years, so, that's just buying the tree, that's not getting in the ground and maintaining it, so.
We ready for a motion? It's just a tree, right? There's no, I did go out to the site, but not on the site visit, but there's no stone wall there, right?
No.
I move that the planning board recommend granting the request to remove the trees.
I second.
Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? You got that? Abstentions?
So, I would be in favor of removal of the trees. I'd like to, we could discuss a little more after we go through the vote process, I guess.
You'd like to discuss?
Yeah, that, I want to just talk about refixing the existing gravel road that they have in there, curb cut that's in the public way, and should be returned to a non-road status, once they're done. I just want to make sure that's part of this agreement. It may already be with some of the other agreements, I'm not sure.
It isn't, but I can tell you that you can condition this, and in fact, I'd be pretty happy to bring a tree from my tree farm in Suffield, and put a tree in what was the old access.
But then, you wouldn't have permanent access for the five or six trips a year that you have to get into the site, correct?
No, yes, we're going to move, we're going to take the trees down, get on our own property, we're going to restore what's been the access to a pristine position.
Oh, put it on the other side, okay.
Yes, with a tree, if you want to condition this, we're pretty good on that.
Have we historically had precedent for requiring that type of not directly tree-related condition in relation to scenic trees?
Yeah.
I can solve the problem. I think this could be a verbal, okay. And I think it's Loadstar, right?
Yes.
For and in consideration, and in appreciation of this vote, Loadstar hereby promises, contracts, and agrees that it will, and you want to come up and state?
Restore and plant the tree.
And this is intended, this is intended to be a binding contractual legal commitment.
When we, post-receival of our certificate of occupancy, which we're hoping for this fall, we will restore the area, vegetate the subsurface, and install a shade tree that Mr. Snow selects for the community.
Sounds good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second, is there a second? There's a second? All in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand, whatever. All opposed? Passes unanimously.
What are we voting on?
Closing the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Whistle abstained from that vote.
I didn't know what, yeah.
No, I agree with closing.
As the fans are headed for the exit. So we're going to move on to public hearings for zoning amendments. So these are both continued from last week, so I don't need to do the whole preamble again. So 7/10 A-08-18 Zoning Demolition Delay Historical Commission. Do I need to read the whole business again? Okay. So this says, "Continued from March 21, 2018. Withdrawn from draft town meeting warrant." So, yeah?
So after you all had your last meeting, which was March 21, the historical commission went back and had a meeting on March 26 and they discussed your comments. And they also were made aware of a set of guidelines that the Nassau Historical Commission has drafted to advise cities and towns about creating a demolition delay bylaw. And in the end, the end of the discussion, the historical commission voted to not place their demolition delay bylaw on the warrant and they wanted to go back and think about it some more and probably come back to you in the future.
Thank you. Let's go on to 7/15. There's no action we have to take. 7:15 PM, A-10...
You could probably close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. 7:15 PM, A-10-18 Zoning Marijuana Uses, Planning Board. This is continued from March 21, 2018.
Mr. Kravitz might be a good person, or unless Mr. Crowner wanted to describe it. I'm sorry.
Start with Mr. Crowner.
So this is a continuation of a hearing that started a couple weeks ago where we are adding some specific marijuana uses to the zoning bylaw in response to the new regulations that the Cannabis Control Commission has prolonged to cover recreational marijuana use in the state. They have added a number of nuanced kinds of marijuana uses, including cultivation, testing laboratory, manufacturing facility, those kinds of things, delivery. And if we want to regulate those in Amherst in any way, we should acknowledge them in our zoning bylaw and provide a place for them in the use chart. And so that's what this article does. It also further clarifies and generalizes the standards and conditions that apply to all marijuana uses so that they cover these as well. The original standard and conditions were established for medical marijuana uses that were added to zoning bylaw several years ago. Last fall, we first put a marijuana retailer use in the bylaw and extended the standards and conditions to cover that as well. Now that we have a better sense of what the state, of how the state is going to regulate marijuana, we are able to tailor the use, the standards and conditions to, you know, better cover all the uses that are possible and to make it more consistent and easy to understand. So, so the staff and select board and zoning subcommittee have been working on marijuana issues for over a year. I'm not sure how long it's been. And we've already put this on the warrant. We started discussing this last time. Since the last time, though, we have added another use, both to the definitions and to the use chart, in response to situations that have come up in other communities in the state. This would be for a, what is being called a marijuana social club. In the previous version that we had, we had a use definition for marijuana social consumption operation or something like that, where you would go in and buy marijuana and smoke it there or whatever. Some places are grappling with clubs where you bring your own and smoke it there. You don't buy it there, but you can consume it there. And that's not really covered, or at least not covered clearly by the existing definitions that we have. So we're adding that just to cover, just to cover all our bases. We're not proposing right now to make that a legal use in Amherst, but we'll put it in place and maybe at some point in the future, the planning board or somebody will propose it as an allowable use somewhere. So that definition is added at 12.45. If you look in the packet that's on the table, that's dated 3/29. 12:45 marijuana social club. Then in Part B, we're adding marijuana social club to the existing use category or the proposed use category for marijuana social consumption operation and marijuana social consumption operator. Marijuana social club is probably not going to be very much different than a social consumption operation. We're probably going to want to regulate it the same when we do regulate those. So that's just added into that use category. The other change that is made since the last time we looked at this, we told you last time that we were going to change the buffer for marijuana uses around schools to 500 feet to match the state's rules, the state's maximum rules. So that language is now in there on Page 8, E1A. 500 feet around existing public and private schools, grades K through 12. And then on the next page, Page 9, there's a new number 2 there that clarifies how the other kinds of buffers, which stay at 300 feet, are measured. The state is measuring the school buffer, property line to property line. Our existing regulations were a little vague about that, but it was understood that we were measuring building to the use, from the use to the nearest building. And so that language is in there now. I think those are the only differences. Other than that, we are recommending this article.
Well, I have a question either for Jeff or for Rob. I voiced this last meeting. A number of the definitions seem to be related to definitions that the Cannabis Control Commission had proposed in their draft regulations that had since dropped in their final regulations, finalized regulations. The social club, which I don't recall being in the draft regulations either, but I could be mistaken. There were some others too, like the social consumption and delivery only, I believe. And I still remain a little, I still have a question as to why propose for Amherst zoning uses a definition that the state has not finalized and will get, says that they'll get to. It just seems a little premature. I can understand anticipating it, which I think was sort of the gist of the response last week, but it seems to be, again, still a little premature given the final product that, the final regulations that the CCC proposed. And so it just seems like it could be creating more work in anticipation for down the road than is necessary now for my, from, but, so I just, if there's a response, that's really my question.
I'm not sure what additional work you're anticipating. It's, so I think it's a good idea to be proactive if we can. We, I think we were caught a little off-guard when the recreational marijuana passed and, you know, basically converted medical uses to recreational uses. And we were not prepared for that. We may not have wanted to allow recreational uses all the places that we allowed medical uses. And yet we were not able to prevent that. For instance, on Meadow Street, potentially may not be the right place for a medical retailer or for a recreational retailer. Just my opinion. So I think it is likely that the state will, at some point, define the social consumption operator uses and the delivery uses and may spring it on us before we have a chance to react and to regulate it the way we want to. So we need to, we have chosen to put them in the use chart as no's. They're not allowed by the state anyway, so putting it as no's doesn't hurt anyone. When the state does say, "Okay, this is what a delivery operation looks like, this is what a social consumption operation looks like," that will be the appropriate time for the planning board to adjust the definition of our bylaw to match what the state has come out with and to change the permitting in various zones where it thinks it's appropriate to permit them. I believe that the definitions that we are proposing, while they didn't make it into the final released, published regulations by the Cannabis Control Commission, they are, they were in first drafts or original drafts. So they're not, they're not definitions that we made up, except for the social club one, which I believe was based on some other cities.
Do you want to?
Jeff Kravitz, Economic Development Director. Yeah, the social marijuana, marijuana social club was based on East Hampton's zoning, which also has no basis in the state regulations and actually came out of a situation, I think was where we met in Worcester, where the state doesn't regulate these at all. You can't, the state regulates where you can buy and grow and manufacture and process, but not bring your own situations. And there was an establishment that opened in Worcester with absolutely no oversight and we didn't think that that would be a good thing for Amherst. So that's why that definition was added.
So I'm familiar with the Worcester case and I see the utility for that added provision. I'm just looking at it though and I'm curious about the, or other private grounds. So that sounds like it would extend to individual residences if I'm reading correctly. So anyone's house where onsite consumption of marijuana, marijuana products, where no sales? I'm just wondering if that's a little bit more broad than we might have intended.
I'm sorry, Rob?
So I, the way I would answer that is that if someone wants to host in their house a place where you go and pay someone to allow you to smoke, they probably should register as a...
There's no mention of, like, it can be something, a non-business private grounds. I agree with you, but that's not what it says.
But the state is allowing the use of marijuana in your home. I don't, I don't, I agree that the language is probably a little iffy, but I don't think there is, I'm confident that there's not going to be a legal...
You're what?
I'm confident that there's not going to be a legal issue. No one is going to make a claim that there is a use called marijuana social club for someone smoking in their home. That's not, that's not, a use is a, is a, is a property designation. It's something that you're doing with your property. If your property, if your use is your residence, things that you're allowed to do in your residence include smoking, so.
Christine?
Well, would a social club, so there's no sales for the marijuana, but is there a monetary exchange, like, for the club? Like, meaning that's the difference between someone having a party and inviting a lot of people over and it's a social club or organization or whatever, club, business. There must be some kind of business exchange to put it into this, but that wording's not there.
I think in the case of the Worcester one, I don't know that they charged membership fees, but they were selling paraphernalia for, you know, smoking marijuana and other products, tobacco. So it was a store that was licensed as a smoking club and then they happened to, they didn't realize the permitting bodies that there's another substance that soon will be available. So I think that's what happened in Worcester.
Good grief.
But that's like a store, you see, right?
Yeah, so it's a business.
So we're trying to define the use here and to me, when you read this, it's like what you, you know, where it said, "or other private gra," that is vague. I mean, maybe it has to be, there's no sales. It's not social. It's not a part, I mean, we're trying to differentiate, right?
You can't, as Rob was saying, you can't have two primary uses on, you know, on the same property. So you couldn't both be a house and a marijuana social club. Is that, that's what you're saying, right? It would be a mixed use.
Oh, God.
What could go wrong with that?
Steve, I think Jeff was...
I'm sorry. Jeff?
I'd also add, and I'll defer to Mr. Levinstein, an attorney, but, you know, from statutory construction, you read a list in the context of the list. So I don't think, at least from my understanding, you would look at the entire list and say, "It doesn't seem like a single-family residence is similar to these." It's sort of business-related, but...
Yeah.
I did want to add one thing, just before you conclude the public hearing. Are they public here? And I thought may, perhaps a representative of the Board of Health would be here and I apologize to the zoning subcommittee for not bringing it up there, but the Board of Health also did meet and was considering or hoping that the 500-foot buffer for K through 12 schools would be extended to preschools. So I thought that would be important information for you to hear as well. And since they're not here, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Oh, man.
Steve, Chris has her hand up.
Chris?
That comment leads me to talk about what would be in and out of the scope of the warrant article. So this warrant had, has already been signed by the select board. It was signed on Monday, I think. There have been a couple tweaks in the interim, but it was published today. And so after it's published, there really can't be any changes that are extending the scope of the article. So to add preschools to the list of schools would be, in my opinion, extending the scope of the article.
Yeah, and the reason that it wasn't put in before, we did talk about it, or at least mentioned it when we were discussing this, the... at least mentioned it when we were discussing this, the, the 500-foot language is taken from the state's regulations, and the state's regulations are about K through 12. They didn't, the state did not discuss preschools. So we were, we were trying to match the state so that there wouldn't be any conflict between our rules and the state rules. That's something that, you know, you can put on your list and fix some of the time.
Other comments? Chris?
I just thought it was worth pointing out that some of these uses are being proposed to be by site plan review rather than special permit. So last fall, we had talked about all the uses being by special permit, but in this case, there are a few uses, like marijuana research facility, an independent marijuana testing laboratory, manufacturer, and marijuana micro-business, that are proposed to be allowed by site plan review in certain of the business districts. So I just wanted to point that out to you as being different from what we talked about last fall. And the thought, I think, is that those uses would not be attracting large groups of people. They would be a fairly steady, you know, just the people who worked there would go there and do whatever they did, and so you, you probably wouldn't even notice that they were there.
Are we ready for a motion? Rob?
I move to close the public hearing and to, and to recommend to town meeting that it, that it passed the zoning article entitled marijuana uses.
Second.
Comments? Discussion of the motion? I see none. Oh, Michael.
I wasn't here last time, so I'll have to abstain from this, but it seems to me that it would be useful for town meeting if there were a map created which showed where facilities could be located. It seems to me that there's so many prohibitions and the zoning issues, not being able to, to create these institutions in, in residential zones and other zones, that if, if we could show town meeting exactly where the impacts might be by map function, I think it would be helpful to sell the idea to town meeting. I don't, I mean, that sounds like, maybe it's a big order for staff to do that. I'm not sure exactly what's involved in that, but.
I agree, and that was discussed at the zoning subcommittee meeting, but I think it should also be made clear what this change is facilitating and what is already possible. We talked about it specifically in regards to the buffers around schools. I think that if we were to talk about all of the different uses and their allowances in the different districts, that might get somewhat complicated to visualize.
There aren't that, there aren't that many differences. I mean, there are some significant ones, but there's a fairly general sense of where things are. It seems to me from, you know, reading it casually, that the major points, particularly the 500-foot and 300-foot buffer zones that are mentioned, that would be the most helpful and the most useful.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. I see no more comments. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? Got that? Okay. So we're going to move on to item four, planning and zoning. Zoning Subcommittee report?
No report.
No report? Public comment? One option is leaving. Thank you. Other? Okay, so.
There is, there is another. This is sort of a last-minute thing that was brought to our attention. We received a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection. I may, we may have emailed it to you, but you have it in your packets now, and it has to do with docs. And DEP is now regulating docs, and they're offering to cities and towns that they may wish to regulate docs as well. I don't believe this has a lot to do with Amherst. I don't think we have a lot of docs here. I think Hoffers Pond may have a doc, and Epstein Pond may have a doc, but other than that, docs aren't really a big thing in Amherst. But you might want to read this letter, addressed to the Amherst Planning Board, and consider whether you want to discuss this at a future time.
So we all got it by email. Does anyone want to discuss at a future? I see no excitement? Okay. So we've already covered item five, town meeting, when we started the meeting before the broadcast. Old business topics not anticipated 48 hours? New business topics not anticipated 48 hours. Is that where I step in?
New business. Actually, you have the old agenda. I'm sorry. So the new agenda, that is, is not on your table, has an item that Mr. Schreiber asked me to put on it, and it's on the posted agenda. So it did get posted, to talk about transition, planning board transition vis-à-vis the charter. So it is on.
So the charter, the charter is confusing in regards to what happens to the planning board. So it anticipates a seven-person planning board starting whenever the new government starts. So that new government might start in December, or it might start in February, depending on whether or not town meeting, there has to be a communication between town meeting and the state legislature, or the state legislator has to do some enabling. So the fastest it'll happen is December. The slowest it'll happen is February, as far as I understand the timing. So whenever that new government is founded or started, that's the, as I understand, that's the official start date of the seven-person planning board. Is that, do people, is that, have I stated that correctly?
I think that's correct.
So, but here's the, here's the problem, that we're currently a nine-person planning board. Four of us expire on June 30th, 2018. So that includes me, and includes you, me, Rob, Pari, and I think.
I think it includes me because I'm filling the vacancy of a slot that also expires.
You're showing us 2020 on the website, but.
I think it might be Jack.
Might be Jack. This, this. We get to decide. We get, four of us expire, we get to decide. So I'm almost positive that four of us expire. So we go down to a planning board of five. So the charter also states that the town manager, starting the day that the charter passed, the town manager's duties are limited. So the, go ahead.
Is it within the realm of possibility that an appointment could be made until such time as the new council is seated?
I don't know the answer to that.
The town manager's looking into that. And whatever he decides will cover all the boards and committees. I don't think he can kind of pick and choose, so.
So maybe I'm overthinking this, but go, Christine.
We were told at a committee meeting this morning that no new appointments can happen except for quorum plus one.
Yeah. So that's how I read it also. So the quorum plus one, in the case of the planning board, quorum is five, right? So we go down to five. So that means the town manager can appoint one, brings us to six. But six is the, you need six votes for a special permit.
So that would be a quorum for a special permit public hearing. You need six, and I think it's six plus one.
Okay. So maybe six, so maybe two people can be appointed or reappointed by the town manager, in which case the terms would be for whatever, you know, whatever is stated. But that, but wait, there's, that's not all. So here's the conceptual problem that I have, is that obviously we can work with a seven-person planning board, but the six-person supermajority for a special permit and the five-person affirmative vote for a site plan review is all based on a nine-person board. So in other words, it's actually putting, it would be putting applicants under a higher standard, because they'd have to get six out of seven votes. And so the other thing is that this, our size is defined in the Amherst zoning bylaw. It's not defined in the charter, or whatever the government act, it's defined in the zoning bylaw. So maybe this, maybe we just have to, or whoever, maybe we just have to go with whatever it is. But one idea that I had was that, especially if the special town meetings are a possibility within regular town meeting, is to propose a zoning change to the zoning bylaw, which brings us to seven.
I know that the Select Board is very reluctant to have special town meetings within town meetings because they're expensive. They have to advertise them in a certain way, and there's a whole scheduling thing that has to go with them. I can ask, but.
So in other words, if we went, if our zoning bylaw said that we're seven, that would be passed, that would become law, you know, whenever town meeting concludes in June, then that would solve that quandary. But the, the other problem is it also states that we need five votes for a site plan review, which is based on nine. Well, it's based on, it has to be two-thirds, but it assumes that maybe one or two people are absent, but it has to be a minimum.
So I think the way I read it is that it doesn't, the number of planning board members doesn't go to seven until the new government becomes, you know, is in, in place. And so the language that you need a quorum plus one is just to kind of filling vacancies. And so in my mind, you still need the vote, you still need to get six members to vote for a special permit and five members to vote for a site plan review.
No, I understand.
Because the number is still nine, even though you don't have actually nine members.
That's a conceptually the problem, that the town manager is actually prevented from appointing a nine-person board. But applicants are still required to meet two-thirds of nine. So we're actually requiring them to hit, hit a higher standard. We're actually asking them to hit six out of seven rather than six out of nine, which is a higher standard. It's a different standard. And to me, that conceptually doesn't make sense. So we've had times that the planning board has been seven because the town manager has simply not filled positions. But this is a case where he's not allowed to fill positions. And to me, that's, doesn't, there's a problem with that.
Just looking at the website, so there's four that run out in 2018, Jack, Rob, Steve, and Pari. And interesting, if David is right, if he needs to be reappointed, that would be five that need to be dealt with in July.
I think David is on until 2020.
He's not on the website yet? I don't know, did you get a letter?
I was on the website, on the website. I got my letter here. Let's see.
Oh. You are, it says 2020 there.
Yeah, and it says 2020 here.
Oh. Okay.
So maybe you're okay.
My mistake.
They do do that sometimes. They, you're right, you just fill out temporary, but I guess they didn't do temporary.
Well, when they appointed David, the vote hadn't happened yet, so they were appointing him.
No, I meant just regular, like, sometimes they just have you fill in the.
That's right.
But still, that's a two-year term. You're on a two-year, you're on a probation, probationary term.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure the length of the term of the person whose vacancy I filled was. I had.
I don't remember.
Understood, I had thought it was, but I could easily be mistaken that it was.
They did, so then that Michael's 20, Maria's 19, I'm 20, and Greg is 19.
So the, while you're, so there was also this other thing where whether or not planning board members can serve beyond their expiration date. So this came up in the case where Bruce Carson was, had expired, and he wanted to keep serving until he was replaced. And the legal counsel ruled that he could, but the Select Board sent messages that that was not the practice in Amherst. So, am I overthinking this?
No, I think it's good to ask all these questions. And we do have cases that are going to be coming before you. I mean, cases that I know for sure are going to be submitted. So the way the planning board has worked in the past is that people stay on the board until they're finished with their case.
Yeah.
And that's the way the zoning board of appeals works as well. So that question also needs to be asked. Is it possible for people to stay on the board until the case that they're on is finished?
It's part of the Bruce thing, too.
Yeah. So do you have enough information to, because I tried to, I tried to communicate this with the town manager, and I'm not sure my concerns were fully understood.
Yep. I do, I do have enough information to ask these questions.
Some of the other boards are just keeping whatever their strength is until the new charter, until the new government. So I don't fully understand why the charter commissioner didn't do that in this case.
Well, some committees are losing members, but not, it's the quorum plus one. And we're shrinking, we're, is there another group that's shrinking? I think we're the only one.
No, and the zoning board of appeals is growing.
Yeah, that's growing, yeah. Going to five.
I hear the ZBA needs people. So this is a little.
Yeah, right, that's right.
So maybe I'll put together an email and send it to Steve and see if I've.
Yeah.
Touched the bases?
Yeah. So there, there's another thing that, in the charter, that says that if the charter passes, then town meeting shall not, shall only hear essential business. And they gave some examples, like the budget. So I asked Chris how that may or may not affect us, and Chris's opinion was that everything, all of our zoning articles are essential because we've been working, been working on them.
So my opinion was prior to hearing from town council, and town council met with the town manager last Friday and discussed this issue. And town council had a kind of a cautionary view of which articles should go on the warrant. And then the topic went to the Select Board on Monday night, and the Select Board determined that all of the zoning articles should go on the warrant.
So the determinants of essential.
Yes. So I think town council felt definitely the marijuana articles were important because we're just dealing with new state law having to do with marijuana. We have two petition articles that have to go on the warrant because they're petition articles. And my understanding was because one of the petition articles has to do with inclusionary zoning, and also because the town has been working on inclusionary zoning for years, that the, the planning board's version of inclusionary zoning should also go on the warrant. He was a little bit less convinced that supplemental detached dwelling units should go on the warrant. And, but the Select Board determined that they would put it there. And town council had some cautionary things to say about the petition article having to do with the amended zoning map. And I'm, I haven't heard from town council myself, so I don't know exactly what words he used or what his issue was, but I understand that the issue was that it is such a large change to zoning. Basically, it's one sort of corner of town that would be changed by this zone change. But the petitioner is now coming at it from a different standpoint. The petitioner is now accepting the building commissioner's wording, which is for properties that are zoned RO, that are above 425 feet in elevation above mean sea level, and that are not connected to sewer and water, that those properties should follow the dimensional requirements of the RLD zoning district. That's similar to a zoning bylaw that the building commissioner has used in other cities where he's worked. So it's not that we on the second floor are supporting this effort, this petition effort, but we often help petitioners to make their petition in a form that is usable or dealable with town meeting. So this is the effort that we've made. So Joel Bard hasn't seen that language yet, but I suspect that he's going to still have the same issue, that this is a huge change to make in one quadrant of town prior to the charter becoming, coming into effect. So the two things that he had a problem with, supplemental detached and this Kener petition article.
Wow.
Oh, and may I say one more thing? I spoke with the town manager tonight, and he said that town, the town attorney, we've been cautioned not to use the term town council, because now we're going to have a town council C I.
Oh, I see.
So we shouldn't say town council S-E-L. But anyway, our town attorney will be coming before the town meeting during the first night. Maybe I said... I didn't say this before to you all, did I? To talk about how town meeting should operate, given the fact that the charter is in place. And he's also going to come up with some... Something in writing. Maybe I said that already. Anyway, we'll get some advice from the town attorney prior to having to deal with town meeting.
There was another communication that the charter commission itself could reconvene within a month after the election and fix... Or propose to fix things that they saw as glitches. And I don't know if this, my concern is even rises to the level of a glitch or not. But it seems that it's just this higher standard for that six-month period, which is probably what I'm most concerned about.
Would you like me to try to set up a meeting between you and town manager to discuss these issues?
That'd be great.
Okay.
I'm sure he has nothing else to think about.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Anything else on that? Item eight, Form A and R subdivision applications.
No Form As.
Upcoming ZBA applications.
Mr. McCarthy.
I don't believe there's been anything new since the last planning board meeting.
Thank you. Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB.
We have four... Four public hearings, actually three public hearings, ones combined, coming up on April 18th. I think I may have mentioned these before, but there's a mixed-use building being proposed on University Drive, which has a site plan review and a special permit associated with it. There is a request from Applebrook Subdivision in South Amherst to change the condition related to the crosswalk. And there is Elsie Fetterman on Logtown Road applying to delete a reservation that the town has on her property. So those are coming up on the 18th. And then on May 2nd, we have All About Learning, which is a preschool in South Amherst, which is moving from one location on Palmer Lane to another location. And they are having to build a playground and improve their parking. And so they're coming with two site plan reviews and a special permit on May 2nd. And I already asked you all if many of you would be able to attend on May 2nd, and I think... One, two, three, four, five, six. I have six. I'll tell you who they are. David Levinson, Rob Crowner, Maria Chow, Christine Gray Mullen, Jack Jemsek, and Michael Burtwhistle. Are there others who would be able to attend a 5:00 meeting on May 2nd, which is a town meeting night prior to town meeting? Mr. Stutzman. So that gives us one, two, three. That's seven. Anybody else? So not Mr. Schreiber. Mr. Schreiber?
I cannot attend.
Not attend, okay.
Or you'll have your necessary...
Yes, I will. Yep. Okay. And I don't... May I go back and ask about April 18th?
Yeah.
Because I think I only have four people down for the 18th.
I cannot attend the evening.
So I have Jack Jemsek, Michael Burtwhistle, Greg Stutzman, and Rob Crowner for the 18th. So no Maria, no Christine. Who else is left?
Pari.
Pari.
Is she...
We don't know about Pari. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's one more person. David. Is David Levinstein available on April 18th?
At what time?
7:00.
And I'm sorry, for another...
Planning board meeting.
A planning board meeting.
It's school vacation week, if that matters to you.
I just need one more person.
Is it? Which school vacation week?
Like under...
Public school?
Yeah, public school, K through 12.
Okay. I think I'm... I think I could be available.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll get... I'll... I need to check somebody with somebody else.
Okay.
So I'll let you know, I hope, tomorrow, Chris.
Yes, that'd be fine. May I go back to new business for a minute?
Yep.
You all received a notice of community outreach meeting from Herbology Group, which is proposing to have a community outreach meeting on April 11th, when you'll be here. But in any event, they're having this meeting at the Hanger Pub and Grill to talk about their intention to establish a marijuana retailer at the location where Rafter's Restaurant is currently located. So you have this notification here, okay?
Thank you. Keep going.
Excuse me, can I ask about that? I mean, I'm interested in attending that outreach meeting, but it conflicts with this. Is there any way to accommodate that?
Six, seven, eight. We have eight people on the 11th, so we could say Mr. Levinstein can go to that meeting, and we'll still have seven people. Okay?
Thank you.
Tell us how it goes.
Just... Do people notice that the same group also the day before is having a similar outreach meeting in East Hampton for a site that they're proposing there as well?
And they're meeting with the Select Board, I think, this coming Monday.
What's curious, actually, I looked them up today, too. They're... In the Secretary of State, they're still a nonprofit corporation, so they're geared for medical marijuana. But they haven't yet made the conversion, which they would need to, to set up a recreational marijuana. So there are lots of balls in the air there.
The times they are changing. Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. PVPC.
I can't make the meeting. The next one's April 12th, and I reached out to Christine and Connie as alternates if they want to go.
Which I wrote back. And I said I had a previous engagement, but did you hear from Connie?
I did not hear from Connie.
All right, we'll talk.
CPAC, not here. Ag Commission, hasn't met. Design Review Board?
No recent meeting.
Municipal Affordable Housing Trust?
Meeting next Thursday, hasn't met since our last meeting.
Zoning Subcommittee, UTAC?
I have nothing.
Downtown Parking?
Met today, working on a shortlist to bring to some more tweaks to parking that will go to the Select Board.
Reporter of the Chair, none?
Report of Staff, none.
Adfirmant. See you guys.
It's much better than a three-hour...
We meet again next week?
That's right.